My apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repaying justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. To start today's meeting, we have a presentation from the folks at the pavilion in Furlong.
It's by way of history, I guess we met, it's been six, eight weeks ago, I'm not sure when, when the last presentation was made with some modifications and some revisions. And I would say, at the end of that meeting, the board said, proceed with what you're going to do. One of the elements of that was, what would it look like? And to that end, I believe, the applicant has provided two versions, I guess, for lack of a better word, of what it would look like. And I was looking for some board input as to the architecturals. In addition, he, the applicant, has submitted a stipulation, which is intended to incorporate the various elements of this project into a court order to settle the litigation. I think I spoke to Mr. Murphy. There are some concerns about the stipulation from board members, need some revisions, so the board is not going to be approving any stipulation today. And I have the various comments from board members that I will share with him, but I think we should go over the architecturals. And if you have, if you have another plan, or is that the same plan? Maybe you could bring it up and acquaint the public about what that is, what it's all about, and also show the renderings, and let's get a perspective from the renderings as to what the board and the public feels is appropriate, makes sense.
Sure. Good afternoon. We were last here four months ago. We were here on November 15th.
Four months ago?
Time flies, doesn't it? November 15th. And at that time, we did present an updated plan that further reduced the impervious to a 40 percent limit, and reduced the overall square footage additionally down to plus or minus 52,000 square feet. It's that plan that is on the easel to my right, and which Scott prepared, and we reviewed at length the last time. We had gone through different considerations on impervious, reducing the bike path, eliminating from calculation the one-way access, and the access to the well, et cetera. But, so that hasn't changed, so we're happy to go over that again, if you like. However, since then, Jeff's right, we did exchange comments on a stipulation. Jeff provided me some specific comments earlier today, all of which I've gone through with our client, and we had no issue with the ones that Jeff raised previously.
There's some additional comments from board members, though, that I'll share with you tomorrow.
Okay, well, that's fine, but at least as far as the ones you've shared with me so far, I think we're good. Also with us today is David Polotnick, who is the architect that has done some elevations. We did some earlier, we got some feedback about those, and David, in response, has prepared an alternate, which, again, we circulated in small form, but David can review them in the larger elevations that he also has here as well. So, if you'd like, I'll introduce David, and he can go through that for you.
Welcome.
How are you doing? My name is David Polotnick. I'm with PZS Architects, I'm the project architect. And I have two renderings.
I hope that, we need to find a way that the folks in the audience can take a look at these, because I-
Aren't they the same?
No, they're different.
Actually, they're slightly different, but-
Where's cool.
It's like where is what?
I don't see that.
I don't know if the public, why don't you hold up and have them take a look at, and that's version one. Just sort of do the, like they do with boxing matches, you know, the first round?
If you'd like, I'll tell you a little bit about the buildings. The buildings are going to be constructed of wood frame, and for the exterior materials, we'll have-
You're going to be mic'd.
So, as I was saying, the buildings are constructed of wood frame, and they'll have wood trusses. Basically, the exterior walls would be constructed of wood. The exterior materials would be on the end path, you can see on the end. These two renderings are pretty similar, but the ends and the base will have soiling here, and the roof would be an asphalt shingle, and there'd be some use of some metal roofs in some locations, you can see at the corner over here, you'll have the metal roof. There also, we would be using some stockout, with the sign dams, and there'd be some wood trim and some vertical siding. You can see we made use of the cooper on one of the buildings. And what I did is, I thought, another board here, just to show you some materials that would be used, that we would be thinking about, representative materials that we would be using. And these colors are not necessarily the colors that we would be using, but we would try to stay within earth tones and colors that-
If you could, just so the residents, if you could, just make sure they're-
We'll take questions when he's done.
No, I just have one question for him to tell, you know, the people, because I could have looked at this today, and nobody-
You're going to have to get to a mic, Jim. Go to a microphone, then. Please.
Because most of the people, you know, kind of know where some of these buildings are, but I believe this is coming from 263. This is the building that's going to be next to where the lamp factory is, and that is going to be the CVS, if that's how I take it.
That's coming in through here.
Right, it would be, yeah, it would be helpful for people to kind of know where those buildings are going to be situated on the property. Thank you.
I think the easel out a little bit, or behind, or something, here.
So, that rendering is coming in through here, and you see that building, you see that building in the background. Okay, thank you. And the difference between the two renderings is that one shows shed dormers, and the other one, we've removed the shed dormers. And that's basically the difference between two renderings.
I have to admit that I said to Mr. Murphy, when I first saw that rendering, it seemed like an awful expanse of roof line, straight after each other, and I said, maybe you could do something to provide a little more colonial breakup of the roof. So, if it's ugly, then it's my fault, but that may be what was produced as a result of those comments, and-
Looks great, Jeff.
Like the dormers?
Yes.
They look like they belong on a track house in northeast Philly.
They don't look like real dormers to me. They look like they're, like, something from the 70s. No offense. No offense to you. You know what I'm saying? They're not like real dormers.
Well, you know, they could be back, like, they could be making it look like, you know, that space up there, and that's not a problem, too, to do things like that.
I guess, the first question is-
That the dormer probably needs to be-
Elevated.
-a straightened roof, of course, not sloped like that, but I think I just-
You know what I'm saying?
So, the question, I guess, is, do you prefer some breakup of the roof line, or does the board and the public prefer that straight roof line that goes all the way back? I mean, it's just a, some direction would be appropriate.
I think a dormer is a nice idea, if they look like they belong there. You know, just putting them on there to break the roof line doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't notice the roof line originally, but after you say it, Jeff, now it does look like, I think, something to break it up, doesn't it?
Like Quonset headish.
No offense to your, they're very nice renderings. They're very nice renderings.
I think the dormer could be taller, and the roof pitch, you know, just severe.
And maybe the dormers have-
So, you want to see more depth to that window there? You wanted to make that window a little more-
Maybe with, you know, six over six, or something else, that gives a little more of a, as opposed, just a piece of glass, and sort of squatted down, like you're in an old Pocono property, or something.
You didn't like the northeast Philly thing?
Same difference. You know, they built those old, you know-
I'm from northeast Philly. Okay. All right, so everyone's kind of okay with the rendering, I guess?
Just a question, so are you suggesting that all the buildings would have the same look and feel?
Yes.
The CVS, and everything, because the CVS would be further over, right? So, that will look the same. Every one of them will have that?
We'll share materials from the best, and everything would be tied together architecturally, for sure.
And I guess the board should have some input in what the preferences of the stonework and the roof material, so if you, I think you had a board somewhere with that, in it-
This is a board, it's just some representative material, it really doesn't really reflect the colors, but the, you know, the stone patterns, you know, what the finish of the stockout would be, roof shingles from the vertical, and horizontal siding that we would be using. So, these are the materials that would be on the buildings.
Is the rendering depict any of those that are on your board, or are they just none?
Doing that now?
Well, I mean-
I mean, here's, this would be the stone, this would be the metal roofing that we talked about, this is the asphalt shingles, the sign dam would be stockout, and, you know, we had a little dormer back up here, which would have some siding in there, so, yeah.
Budge the board whether you want to weigh in on the materials or not, I mean, it's really up to you folks. You do?
Not tonight, but as we go forward, I think we do, I think we should have some-
I think, I think you do, you're the architect, and you're the designer, you pick your best thing, what you think is most appropriate, and we'll look at the final, and if we have any objection, we'll let you know, but it seems like you have pretty good taste.
Yeah. Maybe you could do the final, make some options on some of the stonework.
Am I right? What's wrong with that?
Don't look at me.
Or northeast Philly.
Northeast Philly, look.
Keep it Bucks Cali. I'm, I went, I lived in northeast Philly.
That's okay.
I know, it's okay.
I'm not going to hold against it.
No, I'm not going to hold against me. All right, so the way it looks is going to be fine, and we'll be tweaking as we go, but I think the general look is good, right? Anybody out there want to weigh in on this now, seeing nobody's hand? Okay.
Mr. Murphy, I just wanted from the get-go, I am not going to be wanting to approve any stipulation until most of this, most of the development work is done, because I think there are just too many open-ended issues in here. If this, then that, and then, we shall do this sort of thing, we shall do that thing. I think that there's no off-site impact fees, I think it's a little too early, and I still don't know what happens to all the trees.
One of the comments I said to Mr. Murphy was, we have an old agreement that we have to deal with, plus there was some, was a commitment to restore some trees and whatever, I think we need to, I think, board's looking for more than just that, to be attached as part of the-
Well, as I said, Jeff and I reviewed a handful of things, including those things, Barb, that you mentioned, and we're happy to include those in a revised draft of the stipulation. And we spoke about the off-site impact fee needing to include the terms and additions of the prior settlement with which we were not involved, but that involves the tree replacement issue, and we're happy to do that.
Okay, well, fine, we know, we know that this isn't going to be executed, the rendition of those.
Correct. As soon as, Jeff, if there's other issues of which I'm unaware, I'll deal with those, too.
The board's satisfied, and we air it publicly, we'll, I think the boards, I think, expressed their opinion that the plan was satisfactory. It's a matter of buttoning up loose ends, and getting some things taken care of, and incorporating the architecturals, and all the things that are part of that process.
Well, you indicate, for example, number two, minor shifting of a location. I don't know what that means. We have, we've got the word "shall" in here, within 30 business days, and that always makes me nervous, that the township shall be doing something within a time certain. We shall approve the final land development if it substantially complies with all aspects of the stipulation. That also makes me nervous. I think there's a little too, too much on us to be doing here. We should use our best efforts to approve the planning modules. And then, that we don't have any way of looking at off-site impact fees, if necessary, I think that's something I'm not willing to give up at this point.
And we're not asking you to.
Yeah. Well, no, it's in there.
No, well, Jeff and I spoke today.
Oh, okay.
Yesterday, actually.
Yesterday.
I didn't get a chance to tell him, I, and then, in '15, if a third party attempts to enter litigation, I don't, you know, I don't know at this point whether, hopefully nobody would do that, but, you know, we really don't have any control over third-party interventions, and whether we would have to help you defend those, I'm not sure, I'm willing to go into that on a stipulation at this point. So, those are generally my things.
And I have Mr. Snyder, who I'll share with you, and Mr. Calella's, and other board members, so we'll have some further dialogue in the tree issue, we've got to flush it out.
We're on the line, we're going in my direction.
If I understand everything, and that may be a stretch, but can we delay the stipulated agreement, like Barbara's saying, till you get a little finer detail, relying on the good faith of the board, that we're, you know, amenable to going along, and then it'll flush out some of these ifs, and thens, and, well, you know, is that doable?
Well, and Bill Benner's here, representing Mr. Grasso as well, as he was last time. What I would say to that is that the prospect of now re-engineering another plan, without having the comfort level of a document that we're all going to abide by, I'm sure will make Mr. Grasso uncomfortable. You used important word, if we're all operating in good faith, that we can move ahead on this, or whatever additional comments that I hear from Jeff tomorrow, the next day, then maybe we can talk about that. But the whole point of doing this was to try to give everyone the comfort that you're going to get, what we all intend to provide to you, which is that plan, plus whatever details, and everything else we have to spell out. So, I guess that is a question, Rick, that we probably-
One of those things where they don't want to spend a whole lot of money on engineering, which would be significant if they don't feel that there's a-
Right.
-lay at the end of the tunnel, and that somebody comes back and says, no, I want something else, so it's one of those things that-
But most of our comments are not about architectural or engineering things.
Right.
It is about, you know, how-
Fundamental, yeah, I mean, it's not about, nothing you have stormwater, but they've got to comply with the ordinance, that kind of thing.
We know that, yeah.
So, we'll-
If they are the same character of the comments that I've already heard from Jeff, I don't think that's going to be a stumbling block.
We just want you to know that there's some uncertainty, because they want to make sure that's as precise as can be, that your commitments are reduced to writing, and that the plan is consistent with what's been presented.
And we support all this. I'm good with all this, so I feel pretty confident, if that's the case, that we're going to be able to come up with something that gives everybody enough comfort to move ahead, because we want to move ahead, we're anxious to move ahead.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the folks here, neighbors? Okay. Do you have enough direction? Sort of?
I guess.
Maybe, hopefully?
I hope. I'm anxious to hear, talk to Jeff, and see if there's any other issues of which we are unaware.
It's but, no, it's but that, that's what I said.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
See ya.
Okay, any other visitors or public comments? Next meeting of the board is Tuesday, March 15th, at 7:00 p.m. Daylight Savings Times, everybody, is March 13th. You have to set your clocks ahead, you lose an hour that Sunday morning. Washington DC Cherry Blossom trip is April 2nd, it's $50 a person, you can sign up at doallstownrec.com. Red Cross Spring Blood Drive is Monday, April 11th, at two, from 2:00 to 7:00, at the Activity Center. You can sign up at redcrossblood.org. And the Doallstown Community Garden survey is available on our website. We're thinking about doing a community garden, and we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to weigh in on it. It would be down in the neighborhood of-
Lower Street and Parkway.
The Parkway. There's an area of Chaney or Parcel that we acquired in open space, so we're looking at perhaps a community garden, but we don't want to do it unless there's an interest in, you know, folks participating. And then, movie and ski tickets are available, contact the admin offices for the prices, and what is indeed available. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 16, 2016 regular meeting of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention?
One abstention. You were on Arizona.
But I did watch the meeting, I like to record the show. I did watch the meeting. And the minutes reflected what I saw on television, so.
Okay, good, okay, excellent. Solicitor, anything?
I have a report at this moment.
In here? No? Chief?
Nothing.
And then, the township manager?
I have a few things. First, I have a memo on training for the APM conference for myself and Autumn to attend, and then for myself to attend the PSAT's conference with the board.
I see that you're going to try and learn something about drones, we expect some, you know, potential ordinances, drafts-
That's going to probably come in, yeah.
From this kind of conference?
Mm-hmm.
For us? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request for training?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Setting the work budget session meetings?
Yes. The Ways and Means Committee met, and they want to do that spring budget work session like we did last year, and I'm pretty sure, we had a little discussion before the meeting, that the date's Thursday, is April 12th, which I believe is a Tuesday, not a Thursday, and then Tuesday, June 14th.
April 12th is a Tuesday, and Thursday, June 14th, at four. Is everyone okay with those two dates, whether you can make them or not?
I'm okay, just have one comment about the 12th, because Sean, I mean, he's going to be coming to the Ways and Means, Park and Rec, and EAC, which is like six, seven straight hours.
So?
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up, so that-
You have a problem with that, Sean?
I appreciate that.
If there's any compassion on the board, that's all.
You could pack me like a lunch, a lunch for Sean.
I'm good.
And that's 4 o'clock?
Yeah.
That'll be his first seven-hour day in a long time.
I'm not getting into this.
Are you okay with that, seriously? It's all right? It's a long day for you.
It's all right.
Long day at the township.
Thank you.
Okay.
Both dates are good?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll let the Ways and Means Committee know, and we'll get that advertised.
June 14th, at four as well.
June 14th.
All right, next item is a snow, no, show, no, say it. Showmobile sale.
Yes, the board will recall that we had advertised through the PSAT's magazine twice for the sale of the showmobile. We actually had the Borough of Sayre, which is up on the New York border, come down, look at it. Mr. Snyder happened to be here the day that they were here, so he got to meet them. They absolutely loved the showmobile, and their board, their council, excuse me, their borough council, Thursday, February 25th, approved the purchase of the showmobile for $10,000, which was our minimum bid on that. And our recommendation would be for us to go ahead and sell it to the Borough of Sayre, have Mr. Garten prepare the appropriate documentation, Mrs. Lyons to execute it, and when it's prepared, and then they'll come down and pick it up, and we will make sure when they come, we'll transfer the tags and everything like that while they're here.
I did draft it, and I will be sending it out to all the board members tomorrow for your perusal, so if anybody has any comments or questions back before, if you're assuming you approve the sale, before Barbara signs, let me know, so we can incorporate those, but I have a-
You already approved the sale, right?
You approved, offering it for sale, but not to sale to Sayre.
I make a motion, we approve the sale to Sayre.
Second, Ben.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent, thank you. Comments from the supervisors, Sean?
No, I've had no meetings except for the Pecado Conference on Saturday, so I'll defer. Thank you.
No comments tonight?
Okay.
I get to accumulate your time, I assume, yeah? I just have three things. We, at the pension meeting, it was brought up about, with our two experts, Deborah and Jim Kennedy, that our MMO is not going to basically change much, it's going to pay much more than $300,000, as an example. So, their recommendation was, if our cash flow permitted it, to put in $50,000 now, because they can do, in most cases, better with the $50,000 than we can do in a 1% CD where it is now. So, their recommendation was to see if the cash flow could advance, or not advance, but pay in advance, $50,000, and the pension board unanimously approved that. So, I'm bringing it here, saying, if the consensus is to have Stephanie, and Ken Snyder, and Ken Wallace, or whoever, to take a look at that, and see if the cash flow can support sending in X amount of dollars.
Well, we have a Ways and Means meeting on April 12th, is that, should we have that all budgeted and reported at that time, or is it too long to wait?
We could analyze it between now and then, and have it reported then, and you could take an, you know, take an action, it'll be an advertised meeting-
Yeah.
-if we need to, because we don't have to the MMO until such a time period.
Does that work?
Yeah, and I wouldn't think it would take very long to ascertain it.
Okay.
My second thing is, I, I'm a reasonably intelligent person, I'll start with that, and I read this EMS letter from Chuck a few times, and I honestly don't quite understand it, and then the next step is, he's looking for our support, so I don't know what, one, I don't know what, you know, the balancing of billing, does anybody have any thoughts?
I thought it was a confusing request, too. Chuck Fussler is the head of the CB ambulance, and he's looking for something, like make-up, make-up money from a loss there. I'm not quite sure what it is, either. We can ask for more, we can ask for clarification?
Yeah, I mean, if the board wants to help him, that's fine, I just don't understand it.
I don't understand his request.
Yeah, I think he's looking for support, there's legislation that's pending as well, and then this balance billing thing, which is, I guess, the insurance, the Pennsylvania Insurance Commission is saying that they don't, they won't be able to balance bill on an ambulance ride. So, typically, if they're not, certain portion isn't covered, if it's 600 and they only get 300, they want to balance bill the other 300 to the insured.
I think he's just asking for support, not necessarily our financial support.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I read it, but-
Yeah.
I'm still not sure what it is.
Does he want us to send, what does he want us to do?
Right, what kind of support?
Yeah, exactly, what form. Third thing is, I, as I mentioned, I watched the meeting, and I think Sean mentioned that the Park and Rec is looking at doing some additions, and some, maybe I'll say cosmetics, that's probably not a fair thing, for the amphitheater. I would like to see, before I get to that step, where we're at with the amphitheater, what's profit and loss, what's our, what we have planned for this year? I mean, people give us donations, and we still have a fiduciary responsibility to spend those donations properly, and I can't vote for that unless you get some clarity on how many events, how they're doing, is it going to be-
You mean representative last meeting, right?
What are we voting on?
I'm not voting on anything, I'm asking for Sean to-
He was asking regarding, I think, the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm asking for Sean to-
I think that was, that was, to mention that there was still sponsorship opportunities available, but going forward, I know Park and Rec currently is working on both a list, a punch list of prioritizing those, you know, what still, what they still want to accomplish, you know, improvements and such on the facility-
Okay.
...as well as a schedule for the concert series. So, they're going to, they're looking at both sides, debits and credits, you know, what they still want to do, and other fundraising opportunities as well. So, and the schedule, so I think they, they could, we can get a report from the next Park and Rec, what they have planned, for instance, they're, they've expanded that series, like the concert series-
All right.
And they've added some additional events, or shows and concerts, and there's still some others that they're talking about now. Although the window's closing for sponsors, to get on like, on the printing material and everything, you know, because they have to go to print soon, there's still, that's still expanding, the venues for the rest of the year, so we can try to get that from the next-
I mean, if you could, if you want to bring it, great. If Karen wants to stop by for five minutes, that's great, I just-
Bring it to the meeting, in the Ways and Means meeting on April, for June. We have it already scheduled.
I'm good, whenever. I'll be here.
You know, maybe use those timeframes, or some kind of report, if they're ready?
All right, we'll talk to them.
I mean, especially if they want to do some work during the summer. Pass through.
Are you suggesting to add it to April 12th meeting, that Ways and Means Committee meeting, or the other Ways and Means Committee?
The April 12th, or the June 14th.
Okay, okay.
Whenever they're ready for it.
If they're ready for 12th, we'll go through it.
That's fine.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the lawn maintenance bid for 2016. A memo from Dick John. Any questions? Recommendation is to approve a one-year lawn maintenance extension, no rate increase